of the Beaumont City Council. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Carlton Sharp, the pastor of Faith Christian Center Church. Please come forward. Please silence your phones and if you choose to, please stand and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's faith.
Let's bow. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come today thanking you for this day that you've made. Father, we rejoice and we're so glad in it. Father, we thank you for extending to us a new mercy this day, demonstrating your faithfulness to us. Now, Father, you instructed us to pray for those who are in authority over us, God. And so today, Father, we come and pray for our city council. And Father, we pray that your word declares that we pray for them so that we can live a quiet and peaceable life. And so, Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for our mayor and our city council, Father. And Father, we think that even right now that you're giving our mayor traveling grace to travel to a destination and then to return safely. And then, Father, we pray for each and every one of the city council who are here today, Father. We thank you, Father, that they've decided to lead our city. And so, Father, we ask that you would protect them and give them wisdom for all the things that they need, Father, the knowledge that they need, Father, so that they could lead this city in a way that will be pleasing to you. Father, we pray right now in the name of Jesus that each and every council member will value each and every other council person. And, Father, that they would value and respect their perception. And, Father, we give you praise for that even right now. Father, I pray right now that you would give them, let them be an example of civil discourse. And, Father, I pray right now in the name of Jesus, God, that today, Father, that things that are said today, God, will be beneficial for our city. And let our city be known for a city of, being a city of love. And, Father, right now in the name of Jesus, we give you praise for that right now. So, Father, once again, we honor you, we praise you, and we glorify your name in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Councilmember Gutz, would you lead us in our nation's pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please give us our roll call?
Mayor Muton absent, Mayor Protam Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo. Councilmember Gutz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank each one of you for being here. And no, I am not Mayor Muton. She's out of the city for a conference. So, we pray that she will have safe journey to and fro back to our city. At this time, we have several proclamations and presentations. I'll present the first. Whereas Saturday, May the 7th, 2022, at 12:00 PM, Lamar University will host a community event at the Vincent Beck Baseball Stadium, honoring three Lamar Legends, Jim Gilligan, David Burnson, and Kevin Millar. And whereas Lamar University baseball program will retire the jerseys of Jim Gilligan, number 29, David Burnson, number 25, and Kevin Millar, number 15. They are the only players from Lamar University to have their jerseys retired. And Jim Gilligan, a coaching legend who walked the LU dugout as both a player and a coach. Gilligan has been a fixture of the Lamar Cardinals baseball for more than 40 years. A six-time conference coach of the year. Gilligan retired from the sport following the 2016 campaign, but his accomplishments on the field will be etched in the Lamar University record books forever. During his tenure, Coach Gilligan guided the Big Red fans to more than 1,300 victory celebrations as he posted 1,355 career wins, a mark that ranks 13th all-time in NCAA history. In addition to the wins, Gilligan also led the Cardinals to 12 conference titles and 12 NCAA regional appearances. The Cardinals produced an astounding 30-win seasons, eight 40-win seasons, and a 50-win season under Gilligan's direction. The 50-win campaign came in 1981 when the Cards won a school record of 54 games. During this time, in the dugout, Gilligan has produced a staggering 138 All-Conference selections, 81 major league draftees, six major leaguers, and four All-Americans. He has also coached a Southland Player of the Year, five hitters of the year, and nine pitchers of the year. A member of the Texas Baseball Hall of Fame and the Southland Hall of Fame, Gilligan is also loved by the Beaumont community that in 2010 voted unanimously to rename the stretch of Florida Avenue running adjacent to Vincent Beck Stadium to Jim Gilligan Way. When Gilligan retired, he did so as a program's Southland Conference all-time winningest coach. David Burnson had a superb four-year career in baseball, but was especially magnificent in 1971 when he hurled Lamar to its first Southland Conference baseball championship. This season, he won six games in nine starts, posted a 4-0 league record, led the Southland Conference with 1.89 earned run average, and tossed four shutouts, including a one-hit against Baylor. For his 1971 performance, he was picked as to the All-Conference, Southland Conference team and won the Johnny Sein Award as the league's outstanding pitcher. At the end of his collegiate career, he held Lamar's record for wins, 17. Strikeouts, 165. Games started, 35. Completed games, 18. And shutouts, 6. Burnson, who was a student body president while at Lamar, has remained an active Lamar University supporter, including two terms as president of the Hall of Honor. Burnson was appointed to Governor Ann Richards to chair the Texas Department of Transportation and was elected to the Texas State Senate. Kevin Millar. Millar was a two-time letter winner for Lamar University in 1992 and 1993. He helped Lamar University win the 1993 Sun Belt Conference regular season and tournament championships, advancing to the NCAA Central Regional Championships in College Station. As a senior in 1993, Millar hit .324 with 70 hits, 53 runs scored, a team best of 18 doubles, five home runs, 53 runs batted in. And in 1992, Millar led Lamar University in runs, scoring 41 hits, 41 scores, 56 hits, 13 home runs, and 50 runs batted in to earn All-Sun Belt Conference honors. He also earned the All-Vincent Award and was given annually to the Lamar University's top hitter. Millar enjoyed an outstanding minor league career that accumulated in being named MVP of the Class AA Eastern League in 1997. As a member of the Portland Sea Dogs, he made his major league debut a year later with the Florida Marlins. Millar was acquired by the Boston Red Sox in 2003 and enjoyed his best season as a major leaguer as he posted career best of 25 home runs and 96 runs batted in. In 2004, Millar helped the Red Sox win their first World Series title since 1918. He played 12 seasons in the major leagues. In addition to the Marlins and the Red Sox, he spent time with Toronto Blue Jays and the Baltimore Orioles. He hit .274 for his career with 170 home runs, 699 runs batted in. After playing career, Millar went on to broadcasting as an analyst for the MLB Major League Baseball Network and New England Sports Network. Now, therefore, Mayor Robin Muton for the city of Beaumont has heretofore, April 26, 2022, recognized and applaud Jim Gilligan, David Burnson, and Kevin Millar in Beaumont and congratulate them on their many accomplishments and contributions. Accordingly, the mayor set her hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed this 26th day of April in the year of 2022. Accepting these, we please ask that for the jersey retirement, Coach Gilligan and David Burnson. And we understand Mr. Millar cannot be here, but please come forward. Congratulations, Coach. Oh, man. Thank you, thank you. David, good to see you. Congratulations. Appreciate you, my friend. Please, Coach.
I'm gonna let David Burnson start it off.
That's fine. Whatever you like.
He told me to fill in the blanks.
Whatever you like, Coach.
Yeah, I'm filling, he's still coaching. Still coaching. I want to thank the council, thank everybody who's here, and tell y'all that I'm honored and humbled to be here today for this reason. Lamar baseball has been instrumental in my life. And baseball's been instrumental in my life ever since I grew up. Started on Avenue C, right off of Washington Boulevard, throwing a tennis ball up against House. And then the West End Little League and then led Lamar. But it is a great program. And I would like to recognize Will Davis, the current coach who's here. And I appreciate him being here as well. It's a privilege to stand next to Jim Gilligan, who has been instrumental in my career, instrumental in establishing Lamar baseball as the premier program in the country. He's done more with less out there, and he's won game after game after game and has come close to going to the World Series, College World Series, but for, but for a few calls by the umpires in Austin, Texas. And we won't go, we won't go past that. But it's truly an honor to be here and to stand next to a man who I respect, honor, and love. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Just like to thank everybody. This town has been so good. All the things you've done for me and my wife. Can't tell you. David, I'm so glad that he's being recognized as a baseball player because he's done so much since he was a baseball player. But you can see by his records that he was truly an outstanding baseball player. So, I get to start my career pitching David. And back then, David was like the king in his court. He pitched every game. We didn't play that many ballgames. Well, practically every game, all the big ones for sure. But it was really fun watching that program get off to a good start because we had warriors like David. And then Kevin comes along. By the way, Kevin sends his regards. He has a TV show tonight that he cannot get out of. And, but he will be here on that Saturday. But he sends his regards and appreciates everything that y'all were doing for him. And, but to have Kevin come in in the middle of my program and immediate turnaround when I had come back from coaching in Pro Bowl, we had the biggest increase in the country because of warriors like Kevin. And it's just been a privilege to coach all the guys that I've coached here at Lamar University. We are not only outstanding on the field, but off the field too. And I'm very proud of that. Thanks again, and I hope you get a chance to come out to the ballpark on that Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
One more.
Okay, thank you. The next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Duryo.
Whereas for a four-hour period, men and women and children will gather to partake in a friendly competition designed to accomplish one goal, put cancer on the run, and celebrate, remember, fight back. And whereas in 1986, the American Cancer Society adopted Relay for Life as their national signature event. Relay for Life is a unique, challenging, and fun concept developed to raise money for the American Cancer Society while recognizing cancer survivors and caregivers and heightening public awareness. And whereas in 2021, amid a global pandemic, Relay for Life raised $120,670. This year's Relay for Life will be held on Friday, April 29, 2022, at 6:00 PM. And include teams of runners and walkers who will attempt to travel the most miles around the track at Lamar University's Thai Trail Track Complex. While traveling, our participants are certain to have a fantastic time socializing and laughing while volunteering their time to help raise awareness and fight against a ruthless killer. And whereas the American Cancer Society is fortunate there are so many dedicated and compassionate southeast Texans who are willing to devote time and resources to this worthy cause. When an entire community pulls together to work toward a common goal, everyone benefits. Now, therefore, Robin Muton, mayor of the city of Beaumont, is proud to recognize all the many volunteers and participants from area families, corporations, hospitals, churches, and civic groups, and do hereby proclaim April 29, 2022, as Golden Triangle Cancer Awareness Relay for Life Day in Beaumont and encourage all citizens to support this worthy endeavor. Accordingly, the mayor has heretofore set her hand and caused the seal of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Robin Muton, Mayor, April 26, 2022. And accepting will be Gaylin Jones, Senior Development Manager of American Cancer Society Incorporated.
Thank you so much.
I look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
Yes, you certainly do.
Thank you. Oh, look at you. Come on. Thank you for coming.
Mayor Protam, council. Thank you very much for having us today and recognizing the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. I'm Gaylin Jones. I'm actually the director of the Baptist Regional Cancer Network, and I'm a long-term volunteer with the American Cancer Society. It means a great deal to us to have your support. With me today, I have Kathy Chester, who is actually the senior field manager for the American Cancer Society, and Amy Smith, who is a long-term volunteer with our organization as well. Truly, cancer touches everybody's life. And I think that most of us always have known somebody. We either personally have had it, we know somebody that's had it, family, friends. So, it's truly, the American Cancer Society gives us the way to be able to give back, and our community enables us to do that. And we greatly appreciate that opportunity to be able to raise funds for us to be able to do good that stays within our community as well as those that go nationally. I know lots of times people say, well, you know, the money always goes away and we never see anything locally. But the American Cancer Society is not like that. The money actually does stay locally, a good percentage of it. And as the director of the Baptist Regional Cancer Network, I can vouch for that. We have been the recipient for several years standing now. But this year, we just received a $15,000 grant from the American Cancer Society for Transportation. That means the world to our patients. We have a lot of medically underserved patients that we serve. And for them, they cannot get back and forth to their treatments. They don't get access to care. They don't get to see their physicians without the support of the American Cancer Society in this grant. So, truly, the money that we raise and when people are donating their time, volunteering their money, and raising money and participating with the American Cancer Society, you truly are making a difference, and we greatly appreciate that. Martin, he does go to research. We definitely cannot take and will never find that cure to cancer without dollars going towards research. So, we are very fortunate in our community that we have a lot of hospital systems within the state of Texas that get a lot of funding from the American Cancer Society through their grant program. So, places like MD Anderson, Scott &amp; White, St. Luke's, Baylor, all of those organizations benefit from the American Cancer Society that do research because they, the American Cancer Society funds those programs as well. So, thank you very much. We hope everybody can come and join us Friday night. It's a great event. It's lots of fun. There will be, survivors are really the mainstay of our event. So, there will be a survivor recognition. The opening ceremonies will start at 7:00, and that's where we'll recognize the survivors. We have a luminaria ceremony where we recognize those that have fought the battle and have lost it. That'll take place at 9:00. And then we are going to end that with an amazing fireworks show. There's a live band in between, so there's something there for everybody. So, if you haven't signed up, sign up today. If you don't have time to sign up, just bring your friends and family in a lawn chair and come out and join us at Lamar University at the Thai Trail Track. We look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Before you leave, I just want to say it was such an honor for me able to, me being able to read this. I myself am a cancer patient. I've been in remission for two years. And my wife and I will be there Friday night to support y'all.
Well, great. Well, thank you so much, and congratulations on being a survivor. And thank you for coming to read the proclamation.
Thank you very much for the work you continue to do. Next, Councilmember Gutz.
I'm really thrilled to be able to read this proclamation because it signifies the return of one of the most fun traditions that we've had here in the city. And it's the St. Michael's Mediterranean Day Festival. So, whereas on Saturday, May the 7th, 2022, St. Michael Orthodox Christian Church will host its annual Mediterranean Festival on its church grounds located on the corner of North and 15th Streets. And whereas, this year marks the 13th anniversary of the Mediterranean Festival, and St. Michael's is grateful to the sponsors and everyone in southeast Texas and elsewhere who have given them their support. And whereas, the festival will showcase delicious foods, pastries, irresistible folk dancing, a shopping bazaar, an oasis of crafts, music from the Mediterranean, and dance troupes that will perform throughout the day. And whereas, the festival will run from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and the church will be open for tours and an opportunity to experience the rich and ancient spirituality of the Orthodox Christian Church. And whereas, attendees will sample cultures and cuisine that go back thousands of years in a church founded in Beaumont 120 years ago by immigrants from Syria, Lebanon, and Greece. And whereas, each year, a portion of the proceeds from the event is given to a local nonprofit organization. And this year, a contribution will be donated to Indian Springs Camp. And whereas, St. Michael's wishes to open its doors and share the richness of its cultural heritage, customs, food, music, and dance with its friends in southeast Texas and promote peace and understanding for all in keeping with its Orthodox Christian faith, which has endured for over 2,000 years. Now, therefore, Robin Muton, the mayor of the city of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 7, 2022, as St. Michael's Mediterranean Festival Day in Beaumont and urges all citizens to come out and support this fun-filled event. Accordingly, the mayor has heretofore set her hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed. And accepting this is the chairperson of this event, Nicole Terabe. And Nicole, if you'd come up with Barbara and Father, please come up and accept this proclamation. Oh, I know this is gonna be delicious.
A Greek lady from Greece made these.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. You don't need to come, this is my turn.
Looking forward to it very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutz, for the wonderful introduction for our church. As Mr. Gutz said, my name is Nicole Terabe, and I'm the chairman for the 2022 St. Michael's Mediterranean Festival. A lovely background of history of our church was just given. But for those of you that don't know, St. Michael's Orthodox Christian Church is the second oldest eastern Orthodox church in the United States. The oldest one is in New York. So, we have a unique piece of history right here in Beaumont. The Mediterranean Festival started in 2009 as a way to share our cultural heritage, music, dance, and most importantly, authentic homemade food. Due to COVID-19, we have not been able to hold our festival since 2019. And this year, we are extremely excited to invite you to our 13th Annual St. Michael Mediterranean Festival on May 7 from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM after you go to the Lamar baseball event. Come on over to the festival. Please enjoy the homemade Greek mela macaroni cookies. And at this time, I would like to introduce to you our priest of St. Michael's Orthodox Christian Church, the very Reverend Father Michael Pavez.
I just want to thank you all for all the support, all these years. The festival became something very special for the community here in Beaumont, and we are very proud to serve the community and local organizations with some of the proceeds of the festival. We want to be part of the community. St. Michael Orthodox Church has been here for 120 years, and we are a part of this family. So, God bless you and come over when it volunteers too.
Each year, our festival sponsors a charity. And this year, St. Michael Mediterranean Festival is proudly donating a portion of our proceeds to Indian Springs Campground. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Ronnie Stockholm, the chairman of Indian Springs Campground.
Well, let me first start to tell you how thankful we are to be a part of this festival. It's very honoring. It's a very humble participation, too. Our campground, we started back in 1985. Mainly what we started doing was working with underprivileged kids, Boys Haven, Buckner's Kids, and some of the West End wives and Milton YMCA. Kids, and some of the West End Ys and Milton YMCA. We gave them a chance to be back, give them a chance to be out in nature, and that was what our purpose was back in those days. It developed into different things, into different programs that we initiated. And it started back in probably late 80s, early 90s. We started bringing the Buckner's Kids out, as well as the Boys Haven Kids out, and taking them squirrel hunting with the local game wardens and a lot of volunteers. And then that developed into deer hunting, and then that developed into the disabled kids, as well as the disabled veterans. I come from a family of veterans. My older brother, whom I didn't know, he was killed in World War II. I've got another older brother that was in the Marine Corps, along with, I followed in his footsteps. And so we kind of have a passion about our veterans. And over the years, we've probably serviced probably well into the hundreds that we've had out there at our camp. Everything that we've got out there is ADA. All of our facilities are ADA, our cabins are ADA, a bathhouse. Everything that we have at Indian Springs Camp, Special Needs Portion, is ADA. Right now, we're building a big pier through the Hardin County Rotary Club. It's going to be an ADA accessible pier that we'll be able to fish on, fish off of, I should say, as well as shoot skeet off of. So it's going to be serving a two-purpose. Probably some of you know some vets, they like to shoot, so skeet kind of fell into that pier design. Again, I'm thankful for the opportunity to be a part of this festival, and it's an amazing event. I've been out there several times as kind of a guest, if you will, or a participant, eating their food, looking at their different cultures, and it's a great organization to be part of, and it's very humbling to be a participant as far as the donations that we'll probably, we'll probably hopefully receive from the proceeds of this. So again, thank you all for letting us be up here to introduce ourselves as a campground. And I should say we're more than a campground, but the part of the campground that we do with the veterans and the kids is something that's been a passion of mine since the late 80s. So again, thank you, and if anybody has any problems with questions or anything like that, I'm going to leave some flyers back on this desk back in the back. If any of y'all or any of the congregation out here would like to pick up one, it'll kind of tell you what we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Turner.
Whereas historic preservation is effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas the historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. It is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and to contribute, and contributions made by dedicated individuals for helping to preserve tangible aspects of heritage that has shaped us as people. Whereas Beaumont Main Street is a project of the nonprofit organization Build Inc. and has been dedicated to revitalizing and restoration in Beaumont's historical commercial district for over 30 years. Beaumont Main Street also contributes to the National Trust for Historic Places and partners with the Texas Historical Commission, and whereas people saving places in the theme for National Preservation Month, historic places savers and preservationists pour time, energy, and money into protecting places most cared about, often without recognition. A national high five to everyone doing a great job and work saving places in ways big and small, and inspiring others to do the same. And whereas Beaumont Main Street will be celebrating their 30-year anniversary gala on May 7th, 2022 at Jefferson Theater, offering guests a fun and interesting way to look at the early 1900s. Beaumont Main Street will also host an open house free tour downtown Beaumont on May 18th, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And whereas the City of Beaumont also recognizes the importance of preserving historic buildings and districts throughout our city, especially our downtown district designated as a National Historic District by the United States of America Department of Interior. Now therefore, on behalf of Robin Mayor Muton and the City of Beaumont, we hereby proclaim May 20th, 2022, National Preservation Month in Beaumont, and call upon all citizens to join us across the nation in recognizing participants in this special observance, and commend Beaumont Main Street and its Board of Directors and their many volunteers for the hard work to protect, preserve, and promote revitalization downtown Beaumont. Accepting this award would be the Executive Director, Tom Bell, Carol Gary, the Director of Development at Beaumont Main Street. Please come forward.
Thank you, Counsel, for letting us come over this afternoon and accept this award. We appreciate it. Mr. Turner, you did pretty much a real good job of exactly what I was going to say, so, you know, Carol's giving me good notes, but I think she wrote that thing, so I'm going to repeat them, but it'll be a little shorter. I just did want to let y'all know that, you know, there are 90 cities in the historical districts in Texas that are Texas historical back cities, just like we are, and there were 89 just a couple of months ago, so I think we're adding them as we go. So maybe we'll have everybody in Texas in the historical district business before it's over. We have been here 30 years. We've actually been here since 85, before 92, for a few years as Build Inc., but we officially became, you know, a Main Street city in 1992 because they opened it up to the people that had more than 50,000 people in the city. So we're an urban-sized Main Street town, and we've been that way ever since. Beaumont continues to promote and invest in downtown Beaumont. We have inventory properties that we keep up with and keep track of them. We, you know, have an incredible website that the Texas Historical Commission puts on for us that's very, very neat. It's got different layers of different things that tell you a lot of different things about the city and about the buildings and everything else. It's called downtowntex.org. So when y'all have a chance, if you haven't ever been on the site, check it out. It's a pretty sophisticated deal, and it's done us a lot. We get a lot of inquiries about what's going on in our downtown from not only all over the state, but all over the country, and that's a good thing. Maybe we can get some new folks to come in and buy some buildings and do something with them. Would like to also say that I have some of my lady friends with me here today. I've got a whole herd here. We got Robin Muton, who's our secretary, and she's on our board. Robin Troy, thank you, this secretary. Sorry about that. We also have Jacqueta Walker. She's a new board member. She's with Nance Industries, and she's doing us a great job. And Carol is our new, you know, person that's running everything in the office and keeping me in line, and she's a good right hand to do everything. But Carol Gary is our new Community Development Director, and she's going to say a few words about a couple of things that we have coming up that y'all might be interested in, and I'm going to herd myself right back over here right now. Get out of the way.
Thank you, Tom. On behalf of Main Street and our Board of Directors, I'd just like to say thank you, Tom and I. What a wonderful opportunity to stop and recognize Preservation Month and acknowledge our beautiful downtown and our historic district. So we just thank you and thank the City of Beaumont for our many years of support, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to implement additional preservation policies and incentives that will effectively protect our historic assets. We need some of those, so we're depending on you guys to help us move forward in that. In celebration of Preservation Month, it was mentioned in the proclamation, but we are having a gala at the Julie Rogers Theater on May 7th. So after you go to the baseball game and after you go to the Mediterranean Fest, you can come downtown to the Julie Rogers Theater starting at 5:00, and you can, at the Jefferson, I'm sorry, I said Julie, just crazy here today. So you come to the Jefferson, and you're going to have the opportunity to kind of relive what it would be an experience to go to the theater in the early 1920s. We'll have a selection, a big selection of vintage luxury cars that are being brought in. Hagerty Insurance has partnered with us on that. We're very excited about that partnership, and hopefully that'll become an annual event. And I'm sure you've all heard that the Robert Morton Theater has been restored and will play again, and we're bringing in an amazing entertainer, Jim Connors, who was the organ player for the Houston Astros for over 10 years. He'll be here, and I heard he will sing if you ask him to, in addition to playing the organ, so we're very excited about that. We're going to, in addition to the car show and the organ, we'll have eye-roll dancers in period costumes, and we're also going to have Greg Riley, who was the co-author of From, what is it, Bluegrass to Boomtown, Boomtown to Bluegrass? I can't remember the, I've read the book several times. It's amazing story of the Yount family and their connection to the spindle top era. And so he'll be there not only to talk about the vintage vehicles, but also tell the story of the Yount family. So come down and have a picnic dinner with us at the theater, and we're going to have adult beverages and some surprise desserts. So we hope you can make it, but if you can't, we understand, but we would love for you to get those tickets before Friday at the latest because we have to put in our food order with Catherine, so Catherine and Company is generously helping us with the food. In addition to that activity, that event we've got going on too, we want to make sure everybody knows about our free open house and our Imagine the Possibilities Tour that will be starting at our office at 505 Main, which is the first city bank building. At 4:00, we'll have an open house, and we'll have like three different tours. We're going to walk and talk about the different buildings there. We've picked out a special block, and if you want more information on that, we posted the event to our Facebook page. So we ask that you follow us on Facebook and keep up with us. We are now doing Instagram, and we're really out there talking to a lot of people and getting a lot more people following us and seeing a lot more interest in downtown and what's going on down here. So we appreciate this opportunity, and please talk to us on Facebook or give us a call at our office if you have any questions. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Carol's a really good cook, by the way. We'll bring some snacks next year.
Great, great, great.
Thank you, guys. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we will have a presentation by Councilmember Feldschal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free fund program dedicating to teaching children how to start, own, and operate their own business through the simple and time-honored act of building and running a lemonade stand. And whereas, the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce in partnership with Delta Papa Distributing Company, BIS, Entergy, ExxonMobil, Legacy, Community Health, Howe Furniture, Urban Air Beaumont, along with many other companies and organizations, join forces to bring this innovative program to Beaumont. And whereas, children participating in the Lemonade Day program are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little by donating a portion of their profits to a local charity of their choice. And whereas, Lemonade Day is a day of learning, celebrating Beaumont's future. On May 1st, 2022, the citizens of Beaumont are encouraged to show support by simply purchasing a cup of lemonade from one of the youth participating in the program to demonstrate how our community cares for the future of youth and for Beaumont's youngest entrepreneurs. And whereas, all volunteers, organizers, participating or participants, and sponsors are commended for their dedication to this event, and best wishes are extended for a successful and rewarding observance. Now therefore, I, Robin, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, hereby proclaim Sunday, May 1st, 2022, as Lemonade Day in Beaumont, and encouraging all citizens to participate. Accordingly, the mayor has her hand to set her hand and calls the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, Robin Muton, April 26, 2022. And accepting is Krista Hunter, Executive Director, Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I just want to touch back on what Councilman Feldschal had said. Lemonade Day is a free program that we offer to all students in Jefferson County. It teaches students how to own and operate a business by running a lemonade stand, and they are encouraged to spend some of their profit and save some of their profit, and then also share some of their profit with our local nonprofits. And so we encourage everyone to go out. I have flyers on the back, and they're also in your bags. They have a QR code where you can, or you can visit our Facebook page and find where all the lemonade stands will be. So they'll be across the county. So we hope you come out and support.
Well, thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, older adults in Beaumont are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. And whereas, the older adults in Beaumont should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation. And whereas, we wish to join together to extend assistance to the older adults in Beaumont by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active, engaged citizens. Whereas, Older Americans Month is sponsored by Nutrition and Services for Seniors, a nonprofit agency dedicated to providing innovative, effective programs that assist older adults in leading quality lives while maintaining dignity and independence. And whereas, the purpose of this initiative is to publicly recognize their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community, and to identify ways to make their lives comfortable and respectable. And whereas, to honor those who have significantly contributed to our community economically, socially, culturally, and otherwise improving the quality of life in Beaumont, Nutrition and Services for Seniors is hosting the 11th Annual Deliver the Difference Benefiting Meals on Wheels to honor Elaine Schulenberger, Thursday, May 5th, 2022. Now therefore, Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Beaumont, and encourage all citizens to support Beaumont's older Americans who are making a tremendous contribution to our community. Accordingly, the mayor has her hand to set her hand and calls the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Robin Muton, April 26, 2022. And accepting today is Jancy Kimball, CEO of Nutrition and Services for Seniors.
I will make this very short, but I couldn't say it better than Councilman Neal just did. We have been around for almost 40 years, and we have one singular mission, and that is to improve the lives of our older adults, the often forgotten demographic. We want to make certain that their contributions that have built our city We want to make certain that their contributions that have built our city to what it is today stays viable and that they are able to remain independent and in their home. Currently, our Meals on Wheels program is serving about 2,000 meals a day to these people, and the demand for our services continue to rise. We are so grateful that you have proclaimed the month of May Older Americans Month, but we need to remember every single month should be Older Americans Month. These are the shoulders upon which we stand, and we must not forget that. Thank you for your support. It is a privilege to walk shoulder to shoulder with you to ensure that our senior citizens have a quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sure.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, the state of mental health and report by Mental Health America states that 45 million adults in America are experiencing a mental health illness, and 4.3% are experiencing a severe mental illness. And whereas increasing awareness is essential in the way of stakeholders in mental health care to leverage the influence at the local and state level. And whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead a full, productive life. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. And now therefore, Robin Mouton, the Mayor of the City of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim May 2020, 22, as National Mental Health Awareness Month in Beaumont, and call upon all of the citizens to observe this month with the appropriate programs and activities to support mental health recovery. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto and set her hand and calls the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on this 26th day of April in the year of 2022. Accepting this proclamation, we have Emily Ross, Director of Community and Culture and Certified Clinical Trauma Provider with New Path Therapy and Wellness, and Erin Nichols, pardon me, Public Relations and Marketing Specialist with Spinnel Top Center. Please come forward and accept this proclamation.
Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you, guys. Good to see you here. Thank you, brother.
So I am Emily Ross, Director of Community and Culture at New Path Therapy. I'm on this, and joining me is one of our therapists, Kira Bridgewater Flanagan, and Erin as well. I wanted to thank you for issuing a proclamation acknowledging May as Mental Health Awareness Month in our community. The idea of dedicating an entire month to the issue of mental health was originated in 1949 in America. Since that time, the goals of the month haven't changed much. It is to educate the public, to connect people to resources, and to facilitate advocacy for appropriate legislation. One in five Americans is still afflicted with a mental health diagnosis. In the great state of Texas, suicide is listed as the 11th leading cause of death. That statistic jumps to three, number three, in our youth ages 15 to 24. I can't find statistics for southeast Texas or for Beaumont specifically, but I don't think that we need the numbers to affirm for us that mental health matters in our community. I think if each one of us thinks about it for a moment, we can identify somebody in our lives who has been affected by mental health struggles, a coworker, a neighbor, a family member, perhaps even ourselves. So I really encourage you to lean into this next month and to change this conversation, transform it from a conversation into action. New Path last week kind of initiated this by holding our third annual Signs of Strength event. Lots of people in the crowd were there. I hope that members of the council have noticed those encouraging signs around our community, and I hope that they've offered inspiration or encouragement when you might have needed it. Next, no, not next, May 14th at 10:00 AM, we will be hosting a ribbon cutting at our Beaumont location. We hope to see some of you there. We hope that you'll check out our Facebook page and look for other events that we'll host as well as other area stakeholders in mental health. We will provide mental health minutes, some blog posts, and other events coming up to honor the importance of mental health in our community. So again, thank you very much for sending the message to Beaumont that our mental health matters.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Again, thank you. If you were here for any of the presentations and you would like to leave, please do so at this time. Know that you are welcome to remain for the remainder of the meeting, but thank you very much for coming today. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make your public comments on the consent agenda or items 1 through 6. We ask that you please complete a green slip and hand it to the city clerk. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak, and we would appreciate it if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on as you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I don't have any at this time.
Is there anyone that would like to? Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor Protem, I ask that item number, or excuse me, item H be excluded for the purpose of recusal.
Okay, we will remove item H from this motion for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Duryo, then Councilmember Neal.
Chris, I was just wondering why do we need to add names for the, to investment programs?
Okay, so... If you notice, a couple items on the consent agenda relate to, let me turn to...
C and D.
C and D, okay. So for example, item C is to consider a resolution changing authorized representatives for the Texas Range Investment Program. So the city, as you know, has quite a cash flow, and we do regularly invest in a variety of low-risk investment opportunities in order to gain revenue. And so what we're proposing here in C is to simply add the name of Cheryl Ray to the authorized representative of the Texas Range Investment Program. Currently, Todd Semino, the CFO, and myself are named as authorized representatives for that program, so item C is simply to add Cheryl Ray, who is our new comptroller, to that list. Was there another one?
I was just asking, is it normal to have three people on it, or is someone not on it?
Yes, our CFO might be able to better answer, but you always want to have multiple. When you're talking, one of these is, for example, an ACH authorization, so you want to have multiple people involved when you're talking about financial draws. You want to have multiple people when you're talking about investments. So you know, it is certainly, in some cases, required, but certainly recommended.
I'll just add to that. The prior comptroller for the city was Kristen Ferguson. She was authorized on all of these consent agenda items that y'all are voting on today. So Kristen had left the city. She was replaced by Cheryl Ray, who's the new city comptroller. So we're giving her the same authorization and access as the prior city comptroller.
One other question. Can you explain item G, the secondary contract? How does that work? I mean, did both of these companies receive parts of the bid? Or how does that work with having, having awarding basically like two bids for the same?
Right, so item G is to consider a resolution approving contracts to supply asphaltic concrete by use by the Public Works Department. And so we did bid it out, and you'll notice it's in two parts. The pricing is either for the city picking it up at the asphalt plant or for delivery, so you'll see two different prices. But we're also recommending awarding to two different companies. In case one company cannot provide the asphalt, which was needed in a timely manner, we would have a backup.
So the backup company, I guess, would be LD Construction, and they're only coming into play if the first company can't provide everything.
That's correct.
Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, mine was on G too. That answers my question. I think that this is a smart move on the city's part by issuing a contract to both of these companies.
Councilmember Turner? With the investment pool, was it a specific interest rate with some of the investments?
We have multiple forms of investments. We have pools, we have money markets, CDs, US agencies, securities. We always try to track the, whatever's gaining the most interest at the time, but we also like to keep it in multiple accounts rather than heavily investing in just one fund or one asset.
So the two that we're talking about today, is it a specific interest rate for one of the two? Or we just kind of shot to see the lowest?
They fluctuate daily.
Okay, thank you. Is there additional discussions? There's been a motion and a second for the consent agenda with the exception of item H. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. On item H, is there a motion for approval of item H on the consent?
Move to approve H.
Second. It's been moved and proper, second, is there any discussion on item H? With no discussion, move for approval, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? One, okay. That takes us to the motion carries. Mr. Manager, oh, let me read this. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, the claim of Daniel Michael Jr., and to discuss and/or deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code to which specifically Project Deep Blue and Project Mercury. Okay, Mr. Manager, would you please take us into item one?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, item number one is to consider a request. Let me go ahead and read the ordinance. Item number one is an ordinance, entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a regular place of worship in a GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, for property located at 1610 South Major Drive in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The Sikh Center of Southeast Texas is requesting a revised specific use permit to allow a religious organization at this address. At a joint public hearing held on April 18th, 2022, the planning commission recommended 6 to 0 to approve the request for the revised specific use permit with the following condition. Number one is that landscaping required to meet city ordinance requirements. The administration is recommending approval with the same condition.
You've heard the reading of item one. Is there a motion?
Move to approve with condition one. Second.
Has there been a motion and a second for item one? Any discussions on item one? There being no discussions, all in favor of item one approval, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Mr. Manager.
Sir, item number two is an ordinance entitled an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow a convenience store and gas station in a GCMD 2, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District, located at 4050 Magnolia Avenue in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Rahil Meridia is requesting a revised specific use permit to allow a convenience store and gas station at this location. At a joint public hearing held on April 18th, 2022, the planning commission recommended 6 to 0 to approve the request with the following conditions. Number one, landscaping required to meet city ordinance requirements. Number two, show edge of pavement at least two feet from adjoining property line and remove unnecessary parking spaces. And number three, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements for the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. The administration recommends approval of this item with the same conditions.
You've heard the reading and the explanation of item two. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve with the three conditions.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Manager, item three?
Yes, sir. Item number three is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a brew pub in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, for property located at 6280 Thielen Boulevard in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Gabrielle Blanco is requesting a specific use permit to allow a brew pub at this location. At a joint public hearing held on April 18th, 2022, the planning commission recommended 6 to 0 to approve the request for a specific use permit subject to the following condition. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or pre-treatment programs. The administration recommends approval with the same condition.
You've heard the reading of item three. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the specific use permit.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, is there a discussion on this item? Councilmember Duryo?
Oh, one question.
Yes, sir.
This brew pub, isn't it by where they're going to build that new legacy high school?
Yes, sir. So you may recall, just a few weeks ago, a specific use permit was approved for a school just to the north of this property. However, that school is not yet open, and so any distance requirements from that school would not be in effect until, if and until, that school is opened. Yes, sir.
So this particular business, is it considered more of a bar type of nightclub or more of a restaurant?
It's described as more of a restaurant, so they are going to have a restaurant component and a brew pub. So it would be, it would not be considered a, you know, a full bar drinking place, but more of a brew pub with food, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. But also, Chris, at the planning and zoning, they made it clear that there would be a separation between the part of it brewing the beer and the restaurant, just addressing that issue of it being a family-friendly environment. There was a statement made there at P&amp;Z that there would be a separation, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Is there a difference between an establishment just selling beer versus one selling beer and alcohol? Is there a different license?
It depends on how much, really it depends on how much food they're serving. So if it's 51% of their sales are just beer and wine or liquor, then it's a different category. But this is, this is a brew pub, so.
Okay. Councilmember Gibbs?
Is this the same sort of thing as Poor Brothers and Struggle Street when we're talking about a brew pub?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and second, all in... It's been moved and second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, please.
Mayor and council, item number four is, let's see, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a drinking place in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, for the property located at 10425 East Tex Freeway Suite 100 in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Tammy Scott is requesting a specific use permit to allow a drinking place at 10425 East Tex Freeway Suite 100 at a joint public hearing held on April 18th, 2022. The planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request for the specific use permit, subject, subject to the following conditions. Number one is provide an eight-foot sound barrier along the entire west side of the outdoor patio area. And number two, that the layout and design of the drive-through and patio, needs to be, to provide adequate protection to the pedestrians and patrons from errant vehicles such as columns, bollards, pavement markings, and directional signage. Final approval subject to the city engineering. The administration is recommending approval of the specific use permit with the same conditions.
Heard the reading of item four as well as the recommendations. Is there a motion with the conditions?
Move to approve with conditions.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, is there a discussion on this item? Councilmember Duryo?
Well, can you tell me what's the definition of a drinking place?
So when you, when you're selling a, when, when the majority of what you're selling is alcohol, so 51% or more is alcohol, then it becomes a drinking place. And so a drinking place is, is really more in line with what you think of as a bar.
So not just beer and wine or frozen drinks, it's a bar?
Well, we, in the zoning ordinance, we define it as a bar. Now, the TABC may have some different rules. We have a separate city ordinance, but in terms of zoning, we treat it as a drinking place. When you sell alcohol, but you have, when you sell more food than alcohol, then it's, then it becomes perhaps just a restaurant. But if it's a majority of alcohol, then it's a drinking place.
Also, how are they going to address the hazard with the patrons having to cross the drive-through lane to get to the patio?
Correct. That was a concern that was discussed during the planning commission hearing, and that was a concern because you have, you essentially have the building, then you have a driveway, and then you have what they're proposing to be this outdoor seating patio area. And so what was discussed was that they have a similar setup in another city that seems to work well. The concern was still there, but the commission recommended approval subject to final design review by city engineering and traffic. So in other words, we could take a look at it, make sure that it, you know, has bollards, it has striping, it has markings, whatever we think, we, we think it needs to have to mitigate the risk of, of, you know, a conflict between pedestrians and the traffic. And that's why the condition is, is in there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you. This particular location, is it by a neighborhood? Because I noticed we said sound barrier. Can you kind of explain what a sound barrier is? And how would they kind of protect the residents from hearing, you know, the music or the entertainment?
Right, so it's located roughly, well, it's located between East Tex Highway and Old Voth Road. To the west of this property, across Old Voth Road are single-family homes. And so with there being discussion of outside, outside music and things like that, there was a concern to try to mitigate that impact on those residential properties on the other, other side of Old Voth Road. So that's where the condition of the sound barrier comes in. So what we're asking for is that sound barrier on the west side of the, of that patio to try and mitigate that impact.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Thank you. Is Tammy Scott in the room? You know, I, we know that we're trying to mitigate this sound with an eight-foot wall, and I appreciate that, but we all know that it's hard to contain music when it's just... And then we end up with phone calls with citizens saying, you know, when are y'all going to deal with this, this noise problem? So I was just curious if the, if Tammy was here and her willingness to work with the city and the, and the residents to try to handle this sound where it doesn't get out of hand. But she's not here, so you can't answer my question.
Cannot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duryo?
Chris, did they have any of the neighbors, when you sent out the letters, any against?
No, I don't, let me look real quick, but I don't believe so. No, sir, no against.
Are there other questions or discussions? There's been a motion and a second. All in favor of motion? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager, item number six? Five, item five.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item number five is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a commercial strip center, including a laundromat, retail, and office space in a GCMD II, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling II District, for property located at 2855 North Major Drive in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Aaron Ward of Faust Engineering and Surveying has requested this specific use permit to allow the commercial strip center, including laundromat, retail, and office space at this location. At a joint public hearing held April 18th, 2022, the planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the specific use permit with the following conditions. Number one, must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or pre-treatment programs. Number two, install landscaping to meet city of Beaumont regulations. And number three, acquire textot permission for a sidewalk along Major or construct the sidewalk on private property. The administration recommends approval of this item with the same conditions.
You've heard the reading of item five along with the staff recommendations. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the specific use permit.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second?
And with the conditions.
With the conditions. Are there other discussions?
Mayor Proton?
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Chris, I, I'm just curious. If you look at the map that you provided, Exhibit B, is that a canal that this property is sitting right on top of?
Yes, well, there's, there's definitely a drainage ditch that runs through this property. I know that applicant is aware of it, and they are working to design around it. But to answer your question, yes, sir, there is a drainage ditch that runs right through it.
And so they're, they're ready to deal with that issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions or discussions? There's been a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six?
Mayor, council, item number six is to authorize the interim city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with Vortex Companies. On January 11th, 2022, by resolution, city council awarded a contract to Vortex Companies of Houston in the amount of $3,652,012.63 for the repair of the 72-inch Threadneedle Outfall Stormline located within the ExxonMobil refinery. Proposed change order number one, in the amount of $1,204,571.39, is required to adjust the amount of chemical grouting in the amount of $828,006.39, used to fill in and stabilize the soils around the top of the 72-inch stormline, and to increase the length of the point repair to bring the 72-inch pipe to grade. No additional days will be added to the contract for the additional work. If approved, the change order number one would result in a new contract amount of $4,856,584.2 cents. We should note that during design and construction, a ground-penetrating radar survey of the stormline within the limits of the point repair was performed. Second survey of the remainder of the line was later conducted by the contractor, which identified the subsurface voids in the soils around the 72-inch stormline. These voids, if not filled and stabilized, could have damaged and rehabilitated the pipe in the future. Surveying of the grade and condition of the pipe was performed during the design phase of the contract. However, some of the areas were still inaccessible until construction began. It was then found that thirty, or a 53 feet, rather, foot section of the pipe is draining in the wrong direction, requiring the pipe to be excavated and set to proper grade. Failing to do so would decrease the drainage capacity of the 72-inch line. And with that, funds are available in the capital program. The administration is recommending approval.
You've heard the reading of item six and the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's been a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there discussions? Councilmember Turner, councilmember Duryo, and councilmember Neil?
Thank you.
Chris, when the citizens are listening and they're noticing we're saying Threadneedle Project in ExxonMobil Refinery, and it's enormous price tag like this, can you kind of explain to them exactly what's going on so they can get a better understanding of the importance of why we're addressing this?
Yes, and Mr. Barkoviac could probably jump in and help me out here, but this, this line was, we think, established where we have an easement going back to 1927. And at the time, I think it was Magnolia Refinery. And this basically drains that area around Threadneedle and beyond, South Park area, out through this property, you know, into basically a way where it can drain. And so there is quite a history on this. ExxonMobil brought it to our attention. And so I think with it being, Bart, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the line is maybe 20 feet deep. And so anytime, you know, you have a structure of this size, that deep, it's, it's tough to, to get an exact engineering estimate, or an exact contract estimate to make the repairs until sometimes, you know, you get into it and do extra scanning and things like that. So it is an essential piece of infrastructure to drain that neighborhood. It does go through ExxonMobil property. We have looked at other alternatives to reroute that drainage, but it's, I think the estimates were bumping around 80, 80 million dollars plus. So as, as high a number as this is, you know, it's, it's better than the alternative.
To Councilman Turner's question, the Threadneedle Outfall is the primary means of draining a little over 484 acres of the city in that area. So it's important to us for the drainage to maintain it. And then it's equally important to make sure the line has integrity throughout the span that it goes through the ExxonMobil refinery, so we don't cause problems there.
Two questions. What exactly is chemical grouting?
Basically a form of concrete, thin enough for them to, to pump it in and fill the, the cavities.
With the, I guess, the way that this particular drain was before we addressed it and started working on it, would that have been responsible for some of the flooding that we've had in the past? Would it not be in set the proper way and I see one of the sections of pipe was draining the wrong way?
It, it does have some, some issues. We do not have a firm estimate of the exact flow through the pipe, but we feel that post-repair, it should function better than it has at the present time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to abstain from this item.
Okay. Any additional discussion? There's been a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? One. Okay, at this time, we do have, have a public hearing. Mr. Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, sir. We'll open the public hearing here in a moment. Before I do, I'll go ahead and, and read the action item. So again, the request is for council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the public services and public facilities and improvement line items of the consolidated grant programs 2022 annual action plan and consider approving a resolution adopting the 2022 annual action plan. And with that, I'd ask that you open the hearing.
At this time, the floor is now open for a public hearing. Do we have any names that's presented to speak on the public hearing?
I don't have any at this time.
Is there anyone that came to speak in the public hearing? If so, we need you to sign up. There being none, I will close the public hearing. And I ask for a motion on, do we have to read the caption of item seven?
No, sir, just to prove the item.
Okay, I ask for a motion on item seven.
So moved to accept.
It's been moved and, is there a second?
Second.
And a second to accept the recommendations on item seven. Any discussion? Yes, councilmember Gads?
I just want to thank the members of the Community Development Advisory Board for their diligence in making recommendations to the administration as to how some of this CDBG funding should be spent. They spent several, many hours and several meetings considering this, and I appreciate their effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Duryo and councilmember Turner?
I just noticed on the list that there were three requests that weren't granted anything, and everybody else got something. Any explanation why those three didn't get anything, or that is processed?
So I do know that one of the applications was well above the, the maximum requested. And the other, again, I think the CDAC spent, spent a good amount of time evaluating the application and just determined that they did not recommend funding at, at that time.
Thank you, Chris.
Council? Turner?
Thank you. On the housing and minor repairs, I noticed we say, with Habitat for Humanity, approximately 12 homes. My question is, do we have an idea how those 12 homes are determined?
So with them administering it, they're the ones that go through the process of selecting it and, and doing intake eligibility. So basically, the applicants go through to make sure that they're eligible for the program, but they, they administer that program for us. But we can always refer clients to them, though.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarity on. I, I have a few, Mike. I won't get it all. The second one, I see the administration fee at the 19%. Can you kind of explain that to me?
Yes, so with CDBG rules from HUD, there are certain limits on how much we can spend on certain categories. So if you see like, for example, public services, which, those are the ones that the CDAC recommending, there's a 15% cap. So of the total allocated amount to the city, we can only spend 15% on, on that category. Going back to administration, again, there's a 19% administrative cap. So regardless of what our costs are, that's what HUD says we can use.
And two more. With public facility improvements, it says special projects to be determined? Like, does it norm, we just kind of, how does that work?
So again, with those caps and controls, in the past few years, we have done a variety of programs. One was, we had done some street rehab recently. We had a sewer line repair program, which is still, still active in prior program years. But the question is, how are we going to, exactly how are we going to use that funding to you for this program year coming up? The plan is to bring it back to council in the near future to get some, some more guidance on that.
And my last one is the demolition. I notice we, is this what we utilize for red tag housing?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you think that this is a sufficient amount due to the amount of red tag housing that we have out there?
So we have a pretty robust red tag program.
Exactly.
The, the challenge is, with it being that amount, HUD, HUD, how should I put this? HUD doesn't want us to use too much for demolition because they like to see replacement. When you do too many demol, demolitions, you know, they start to want to see housing going back, which we do through our home program and variety of other sources. But probably in summary, HUD kind of limits us on how much we want to do. Now, we'll say we also, we spend some general fund money for demolition as well. So that, that's in addition to this.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Neal, then councilmember Gatz.
Thank you, Mayor. This, on the Public Service one, what is in fungatah? I don't even know if I pronounced it right.
So, number fourteen, let's see. So, if you look at the final page of this agenda item, you'll see, funding will be used to pay for a leased space that will be used for multi-purpose needs of youngsters that will participate in a program that will teach them dance, kinetic yoga, aerobics, entrepreneurial workshops, grant writing workshops, health and wellness, et cetera.
Is she, or he, or is this program in Beaumont now?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
And that's for lease of the space?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Gatz?
Thank you. Chris, I see that, as far as these nonprofits that are seeking CDBG funding, that the administration's recommendations actually exceed some of the recommendations in some instances from the CDAC. I'm sorry, the Community Development Advisory Board. What, what is the source of this funds? Did the Community Development Advisory Board not allocate all of the available funds, or how is that working there?
So, we started out with the two hundred thousand dollar cap for Public Services, and that, that's what the CDAC was looking at. However, after further review, you know, understanding that a lot of our nonprofits have, you know, been affected, affected negatively because of the pandemic and donations are down, staff did go back and we determined that some of the projects that the applicant, applicants had made would actually also fall under not just Public Services, but also under Public Facilities and Improvement, which is a separate line item. So, essentially, we went back and we, we allocated some Public Facilities funding, so that essentially, everyone who asked for funding got it, except for those, the ones that had been discussed earlier.
And I'm also learning that there's, in the past, been some Community Development Block Grant funding that never got used, but is still out there and is available, and is, am I correct in understanding that the Community Development Advisory Board is going to try to meet and make recommendations as to various projects on how those funds could be spent?
Yes, so, at the beginning of this CDAC grant cycle, the CDAC met, and there was some conversation that was had about, you know, whether or not the role of the CDAC should be expanded. And if you look at the, essentially, the, the role that they're supposed to play is outlined in the ordinance, it's a pretty broad, a pretty broad scope, assuming the CDAC, you know, wants to go down that road. And so, it was decided at that meeting that we would go through the regular process of alloc, making recommendations to allocate the CDBG funds, but at the, at the conclusion of this, which we're doing here today, that the CDAC would reconvene in the coming months and then talk about, you know, to what extent do they feel like the, the CDAC needs to expand its role, but part of that conversation is to look back at some of these unused funds as to what, what to do. And, and we, administration as well, will work with the CDAC, because we have, we're looking at some, maybe some things we haven't done in the past, the uses of the funds, again, knowing that they always have to meet the national objectives of HUD, but, so to answer your question, yes, we are going to start that conversation here in the next month or two.
Well, I, I just want to go on the record as supporting that, because we, we have, all of us, the ability and have exercised that ability to appoint members to the Community Development Advisory Board, but in essence, the way it's worked for the past several years is they meet for maybe three months, make recommendations to the council as to how those funds should be allocated to the various nonprofits that apply, and then they sit dormant for the rest of the year. But actually, the way the ordinance reads is they are supposed to be a true advisory board and advise council on any number of things, from park improvements to economic development, to just about anything, and it is all advisory. And I know that there are members on the advisory board that would like to do more and are willing to do more, so I support that.
I did have one question. One of the applicants that councilmember Durio mentioned earlier, the one that received nothing, was it, am I correct in understanding that their request was for a, for some things to happen in a Phase Two prior to purchasing the building?
Yes, so, one of the, one of the applicants that was not funded, you know, certainly, we, very worthwhile project, the Williams Center, we've worked with Mr. Williams, we've actually, he's been allocated CDBG funds, I know, in the last two years, and I know they're looking for a, you know, facility of their own. The issue we had, again, was the request was much higher than our maximum, but the other concern is that, at the end of the day, HUD ha, we have to be able to demonstrate to HUD directly how these dollars benefit, you know, in this case, low to moderate individuals. And so, with them looking at trying to acquire a center that they had not, haven't purchased yet, I think their, their request was for engineering and architectural, if that did not come to pass, then it's problematic for the city, because we're not going to be able to show, well, we certainly understand that's the process, we can't show HUD that there was a direct benefit to the individuals, and so, that was the concern with that project. So, we're going to be working with Mr. Williams to try to figure out, you know, if there are other options, but that's why, at this point, we can't, we didn't recommend funding that particular project.
Okay. And I would join with councilmember Gatz, that committee has been instrumental in the past years in helping to deal with issues in our community. But many times, it can be very frustrating, because many times, they made recommendations, and that's not what the council exactly went with. So, that can be very frustrating in spending all the time working on making allocations that you feel would be appropriate, but at the same time, sometimes, it's rejected. So, your work is not ignored, it's appreciated, you make it much easier for the council to make decisions. So, I join with councilmember Gatz in saying thank you to those members of that committee. Yes, councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Chris, out of curiosity for Public Facilities and Improvements, this low to moderate income, does this include our facilities, or we, we're not included as that? Just, just making sure I asked, so I'm clear.
We're not allowed to use, like, we cannot use city, CDBG funding for, say, a city, you know, city hall or something like that. What we are looking at is possible park improvements within a park, maybe possible, but we could not use one for, say, a city building, for normal city function, no.
Yeah, I just wanted specifics on what could be used city-wise and what couldn't be used.
Right, so, we can use it for certain facilities, like, we did the street improvement projects, I think, last year or earlier this year, but it has to be in a low moderate income area, right? But we cannot use it for city, essentially, city functions. Parks is a little bit different.
What about, like, a facility like the recreational facility on Gulf Street?
And that's what we're looking at now, is to see to what extent we could use some of these funds for park improvements in low, low to moderate income areas, yes.
Thank you.
Would the municipal athletic complex fall within that census tract as well?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
It's got that low income housing.
We can look at the map, but my recollection is it's not in a low mod, so it has to be more than fifty percent low mod income, and I think, I think that does not, that area is not included, but I'll, I can double check.
Thank you.
Okay. You've heard the discussion on item seven. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. At this time, this is a item, opportunity for public comments, do we have? Would you please, remember, when you come to the podium, you will have three minutes. When the red light goes, goes off, your time will be up.
Michael Fennell, thirty-two fifty-five Cartwright, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
My name is Michael Fennell, and on April the twenty-eighth, I will be a native of Beaumont for forty-eight years. I worked at ExxonMobil for sixteen years. I've come here because I know it's out of your jurisdiction, but I want the city to know that there's going to be something happening in Beaumont. There was a lockout recently of six hundred people at the local refinery. It was led to believe that it was because of seniority and safety reasons. That was not the truth. It happened because I was attacked, I was accosted, I was abused, and when I refused to change my story, they kicked everybody out of the refinery. I am cursed with the personality of an empath. That means that you think of others before yourself, and in, in exchange, you hurt yourself. ExxonMobil attacked my family, they employed people, they bought off my doctors, they bought off my attorneys, I've had death threats, I'm dealing with a judicial system as pro se litigant. The judges that are appointed are definitely in collaboration with ExxonMobil, they have hidden my dockets from the public without purchase. The information that I have and the things that I have are so egregious and so nasty. The history and the culture of this city, I intend to use to hopefully revamp a law that is fifty-eight years old, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. This law is preventing me and others from getting justice in this type of situation. It's difficult to stand here when I was separated from my child during this event. They emotionally, mentally, and just abused me and so many other African Americans. I have a website that's located on Twitter, is Michael Fennell, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.F.I.N.N.E.L.L. the number five. If you look at the timeline of these events in which I'm addressing these things, you would see the correlation with how this thing panned out with the ExxonMobil lockout. The date that they singled me out, where I could no longer get a class action lawsuit, because it was two hundred African Americans that was affected by this, was the date that they decided to return to work. I have this information. Can I continue?
I'm, I'm sorry, but that's, we, we're allowed three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Nipfo, thirty-four fifteen Laurel, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Protim Mayor, Council. Wanted to say I had the pleasure of serving on the Community Development Advisory Committee, and it was nice to see that all of the money that was to be allocated was allocated, number one, and that the additional funds were found in other areas to supplement the request and make those happen, so that's, that's good news. I am looking forward to finishing out the remainder of the furlough or dormant year with a new task, that this is going to be new to the advisory committee to take in consideration of unallocated funds from the previous two years. I don't want to disclose the number publicly, because I'm not sure if it's public information, but it's available to you guys, and I would request, I suppose is the right word, or encourage you as a council to maybe meet as a working session to come up with a few ideas on top of our own to kind of lead us and give us some direction, which way you guys would like us to go, and we would certainly need direction as far as the few items that we just heard a minute ago, like, what specific areas can we talk about utilizing these funds? If it has to be over fifty percent of low to moderate income, specific areas geographically throughout the city, we just, you know, need to know and have a little bit more direction before we start coming up with ideas that may not be viable or, you know, in HUD's directive. And so, I'll leave that with you, Chris, to get back with us, and Mr. Nisby, thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Christopher Jones, ten forty-five Dusset Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protim and Council. Today, I'm addressing you regarding a matter of discriminatory practices, a threat to public safety, excuse me, and pedestrian access here in the city of Beaumont. We are specifically addressing safe public access for pedestrian walkers, bike riders, and citizens with disabilities and assistive devices. As president of the Charlton Pollard Historical Neighborhood Association, speaking on behalf of many residents from your neighboring community, the South End Charlton Pollard, heart of the city, the avenues, downtown South Park, Brickyard, and North End communities, we would like to request your swift actions to resolve an age-old problem of public accessibility to all, for all. The issue of having safe sidewalks and pedestrian crossings at all railroad crossings throughout the boundaries of the association and the neighborhood, neighboring communities of our city. Our neighbors that choose to walk and cycle or must use willed and assistive, assistive devices have noticed that when attempting to cross railroads, if provided, the sidewalk is not complete, in its connection to the other side, leaving us restricted to complete, leaving us restricted to a, a complete and safe public access. Washington Boulevard was recently reconstructed, and none of the railway crossings along it is complete with the, the new project that just co-inspired. This issue is also restricting commuters mentioned from, from access to the services and resources located in and around these offices. After closing and discontinuing the Main Street and the Pearl Street accesses, many of the neighbors of the association find it difficult to gain access into the downtown area, especially during peak traffic hours and/or torrential downpours, tropical storms, and hurricanes. With these types of unpredictable climate issues and being surrounded by underpasses, we also asked the city government to perform a study with Tech Dot to make accessible a crossway that can be elevated and accessible by vehicles and pedestrian commuters. There is more information that we can provide along with personal testimony of residents, from residents and commuters of our neighborhood. Respectfully yours, the Charlton Pollard Historical Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor Protim.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we ask that, I'll start on this side, comments by other members of council, Mr. Durio.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Samuel. Just two things, just a reminder about the three-one-one system, that's something that really needs to be used. Any type of problems you may have, you can call in to three-one-one, they'll have a record of it, and they'll get you in touch with the right folks. Also, one last thing, I was riding my bicycle this morning, and I noticed some people, when they put out their heavy trash, the, especially limbs and branches and stuff like that, they're actually putting them in the ditches. You don't want to put them in the ditch, want to put them between the ditch and the street, because you put them in the ditch, then it affects drainage, you know? I think that's all I have.
Thank you, councilman. Councilmember Gatz?
There's something really neat about to happen this Saturday. It's going to be at the Jefferson Theater, and I guess most of us know, but in case you don't, when the Jefferson Theater was constructed, it was at a time where they did not even have movies that had sound that went with them. It was during the era of vaudeville, and you had silent movies, and in order to have entertainment, audio entertainment along with the visual, they imported the Robert Morton Wonder Organ, which was damaged during some of our storms, but has now been restored. So, what they're going to do is they're going to play the nineteen twenty-five movie, original movie, of Phantom of the Opera, which is a silent movie, but it's going to be accompanied by the full score on the Robert Morton Wonder Organ, which can make every sound non-demand. It's an incredible, incredible opportunity to come see this organ, and I think Beaumont Main Street talked about another event coming up in May with the Robert Morton Wonder Organ. So I encourage you to go on the city website and look for ticket information for that, and encourage you to attend. I think you'll be fascinated by the sound that you will be able to experience with that organ. It's truly amazing. The other thing I want to call to your attention, and it's in all of your packets, is we've got two more letters from organizations supporting the Battleship Texas coming to Beaumont. We received a letter from the Ben J. Rogers Visitors Center and from the Beaumont Heritage Society, which joins over half a dozen other organizations in the community that are encouraging the battleship to be brought to Beaumont. And I have to say that there is some momentum picking up with this. I've looked and inquired about whether some of the other cities that are looking at the battleship, where they're at in the process, and as it turns out, that they're not really even pursuing it either, they have not submitted a response to the request for proposals. I know the Battleship Texas Foundation would like to be in Beaumont. So one of the things that I've heard concern expressed about is, would the ship block the view of the water? When you go down there and look at city streets Tevis and Elizabeth, that's two city blocks long, that's 600 feet. The Battleship Texas is 586 feet, so it'll fit right in there without blocking any of the view from the AT&amp;T parking lot site. So I just encourage us to continue to pursue this, look at this, and we've got a lot of momentum out there in the community that wants this to happen. I saw, I guess Tony left, but Tony runs a podcast, and they were talking about this last week, and they were looking at the numbers of the Battleship Alabama outside of Mobile on I-10, and they were saying, well, yeah, but Mobile's got beaches and casinos and things like that. Well, we might not have casinos here in Beaumont, but we do have I-10. And if you can't be the destination place, the next best thing is to be on the route to a destination place. And if they can draw 450,000 people a year to the Battleship Alabama, I think we can do similar numbers, because the USS Texas is even more historic and has more to offer than that ship. So I encourage us to continue to look in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Chris, one thing, I'd like to see if we can look into maybe staff or maybe some type of event, maybe one of our community centers, is, we've been having some issues with our bids, so I think maybe if we kind of did some type of program with city of Beaumont, where we open it up and invite different businesses to kind of learn about the bid process and explain to them how to go about it and how to get on the list, I think that would be a good opportunity to get more people solicited to do our bidding process. Another thing with CDBG, I think it'd also be good to do something similar as a group to the community, let them know how to come out there and apply for some of these monies and finances we have available, you know, just educate the community on the process and how they can actually apply, because if we're having money left over, you know, we definitely want to make sure everyone applies and knows how to properly, you know, go after those things. Since I've been on council, it's been a consistent concern, Mr. Boone, the water meters in the grass, particularly in the front yards, you know, when they're damaged, they automatically go on the bills of people in the community. I literally, on my way to council, there was an elder lady that I spoke to, and she literally broke down in tears about not being able to afford, you know, the bill increase because the guy who cut a yard clearly damaged her meter, and it ultimately falls on the resident. So I mean, I just want to see if there's some kind of way we can look into that, specifically with seniors in that situation, it's not like they can get out there and cut their own yard. So I want to see if there's a way we can address that or look into that. Thank you.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Thank you. Today, we had seven proclamations, and it was obvious, there's a lot of great organizations in our city that are serving our citizens and doing the best they can to make Beaumont better. And so just a quick word to those of you here, and those that will watch online later, I really do believe that we have every reason to be proud of Beaumont, and we need to begin to drown out the negativity with the positive things that are happening, and to simply say, you know, I am proud of my city, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So, thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you.
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Madam Turner? Manager? Staff? Okay, at this time, we will reset, we'll end this meeting, and we will go into executive session. Thank you for coming, may God continue to bless you.